I'd like to call to order the Westmont Village Board meeting of January 28th, 2021, to order at 6 o'clock PM. And ask Clerk Simsky for roll call, please.
Mayor Gunther.
Here.
The clerk's here. Trustee Barker.
Here.
Trustee Barry.
Here.
Trustee Brady. Trustee Brady.
I don't see not, I do not see him online.
Okay. Trustee Guzzo.
Here.
Trustee Little.
Here.
Trustee Nero. Attorney Zimminack.
Here.
Village Manager May.
Here.
Finance Director Parker.
Here.
Would everybody please rise and join me in a pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Good evening, welcome. The, again, we're still doing hybrids. We do have some trustees that are attending virtually. And at this point, I go to open forum. No one here? Manager May, is there any request that have been submitted?
Mayor, there were two requests, two comments submitted using the online open forum mechanism, but they are not open forum comments. Each comment is related to one of the agenda items. So, no open forum, but I have two items to bring up when we get to those parts.
Okay. Seeing no other items, I close open forum, move on to reports. As I mentioned, this is still a hybrid meeting, but what I'd like to do is have Chief Riley come to the podium and update us on the COVID-19.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Board. So I'll give you the COVID-19 update for the DuPage County cases. Currently, we're at 67,823 cases, along with 1,096 deaths. The good news is, the 14-day average is down to 73 in the Westmont zip code. The overall COVID-19 case counts are showing an encouraging downward trend. However, the numbers are still higher than the peak case counts that occurred in the spring. Testing volume remains at a high level through DuPage County, and the positivity rate is moving in the right direction between 7% and 8%. Hospitalizations are still higher than they were two months ago, but current data is showing downward trends. Daily hospital census report indicates that the last week, hospitalizations remain relatively flat, at around 200 per day. Deaths continue to affect the elderly. However, there have been two individuals under the age of 40 who have recently passed away from COVID-19. Vaccinations appear to be working. Basically, DuPage County is receiving about 13,000 to 14,000 doses per week. However, on the DuPage County Health Department call yesterday, they're only expecting to see about 10,000 doses next week. 1.5% of all the residents in DuPage County of the Level 1A and starting of 1B are fully vaccinated. DuPage County has work in strategy to have large number of vaccinations available. They are now open in 83 sites. They have just signed a contract yesterday with the DuPage Medical Group, along with Jewel, Osko, Walgreens, and a few of the other pharmacy. Believe it or not, DuPage is leading the collar county in vaccinations, which is a great sign. So, we are doing the right things in DuPage County. Phase 1A was 58,000 people with 56,000 doses administered to date. Phase 1B is 268,000. Current target is 12 weeks. If we have 17,000 doses per week, as I just explained, they're going to be going down to 10,000 next week. Sites include DuPage County Health Department, pharmacies, hospitals, health systems, et cetera. DuPage County Health Department planning another 1,500 vaccinations per week and remainder throughout other providers. I'll say it, no relaxation of mask wearing regardless of being vaccinated. As you know, we've all moved into Tier 1, which is a great thing for our community and our businesses. However, we're only allowed to have 25 people or 25% of the capacity in that restaurant. So, folks, we still need to continue to do the right thing. And they are going to be closing down the Wheaton site and only having the PRC testing out at Villa Park in the podium, or in the, um...
Podium?
Thank you. So, again, that site will close down on Friday in Wheaton and just be moved out to Villa Park. They still are not getting in Villa Park about 600 tests done a day, but there's only about 150 to 200 cars per day. So, that number is continuing to go down, which is why they're shutting down the Wheaton site. So, if I can answer any questions for the Board at this time, but again, we're continuing to do the right thing in our community, continue to wear masks, get out there, frequent the restaurants, but wear masks, wash your hands, and continue to social distance.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Mayor.
As you may be aware of, we are one month into our 100th anniversary celebration. November will be the actual 100th anniversary date. A lot of activities have been planned. Please, go to our 100th anniversary site to find out more about the best pet contests and decals and flags. So, if you're interested, please go and research it a little bit. I had the pleasure yesterday of swearing in the new chamber board for this year. And I do have to say, we had a Zoom meeting and there was probably 50 individuals. Very excited about the community. I think Larry Forsberg is doing a tremendous job at the chamber, keeping them updated on the opportunities for financial reimbursement or with the COVID. And again, we've moved now to where our restaurants can be open and have 25 people, as long as they, up to 25 people, as long as they maintain their distance. So, that's a big plus for our local businesses, so. And that's all I have, so I'll turn to Clerk Simsky, please.
Well, first of all, I want everybody to know that Trustee Brady is here. He walked in, so that's the first thing I wanted to remind everybody. I, just a couple of announcements. The village offices are closed for President's Day on February 15th. Local elections, our local voting, will take place on April 6th for park, township, and library positions. So, just write it down on your calendar. That's when you vote for your local officials. And that's all I have tonight, Mayor. Thanks.
Thank you. And I'll turn to Trustee Nero.
Thank you, Mayor. The only item I have tonight is to congratulate our Fire Chief. Before this meeting, he was awarded a very honorable award, this Public Safety Committee, Firefighter of the Year, and I just thought that was an honorable thing. And although I couldn't be there with you, Chief, I know it means a lot to you and your family and your department, and I just wanted to congratulate you again. That's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Little.
Thank you, Mayor. I just have a couple of items. The first one is, the next Administration Finance Committee meeting will be held February the 11th at 4:30 in this room. And the last item is the Village E newsletter. We have a Village E newsletter that comes out every Friday after the Board meeting on Thursday, so look for it tomorrow. And it comes out twice a month. Sign up at the Village website to find out all that's happening in Westmont. That's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Well, thank you. And we're going to go to Trustee Marie Johanne Guzzo.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Prior to this meeting, we had our Fire Public Safety Committee meeting, and I would like to congratulate Darren Boyce, Joe Newton, and Rich Zasada, as they were promoted to captain this evening, so I want to say congratulations to them. I also want to do a big congratulations to Fire Chief Steve Riley. As Trustee Nero just stated, he was our Employee of the Year for the Fire Department, so I want to say congratulations to him. And just, I really want to do a really quick recap on our Public Safety Committee meeting. We talked about lieutenant and lieutenant testing, a new hiring update. If anyone has received a survey card from the Fire Department, please fill it out and return it. There's a QRM code on the bottom. You can do that with your phone, or simply put it in the mail, or drop it off at the Fire Department. Please, if you can get, if you do get one, we would appreciate you filling it out. There is going to be a spring virtual Citizens Fire Academy class. Keep checking the Village website for more information to come on that, so that'll be coming up soon. Let's see, we also talked about our South Fire District contract, our GMET funds update, and I want to thank Jim Fitzgerald for doing a great job on the 2020 year-end report. I'm sure eventually it will make it up to the Village website, correct? Okay, perfect. And then, our next Public Fire Safety Committee meeting is going to be April 22nd, 4:30 here at Village Hall, and it will probably still be a hybrid due to the COVID-19. And I also want to just touch with the Police Department. They are doing a pet food drive for the People's Resource Center, which is going to run from February 1st through February 15th. Information is on the website, and I do want to say thank you to the Police Department for doing that. As being a pet owner, I know these have been very trying times for a lot of people, and I think it's great that you guys are doing that to help out not only the residents, but our pet residents. So, thank you very much to that. And I, one more shout-out to Public Works. Great job on the snow plowing Tuesday. I know we got between four and five inches, and I just want to say, great job again, as always, and I know that we are supposed to be getting some more snow this weekend, so I'm just, I'm sure you guys will do a great job with that, too. And that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Well, thank you. You took the words out, I think, all of our mouths. The Village streets look very, very well done. Trustee Barker.
Thank you, Mayor. In reporting on Westmont first, we had a Zoom meeting, I believe it was a week ago, but we can officially say now that the census is completed. We finished at 76%, and then there'll be a delay because of COVID. There'll be a delay in the final reporting. But in the membership that was at the meeting, you know, with the school and the chamber and the library and everything, everybody is starting to feel some optimism, so that's good, you know? It's been, it's been a long time coming, and we're trying to plan for, you know, when the day comes and things can resume as they used to be, the good old days, as we're calling them. But it was nice. It was nice to feel that optimism for once in these electronic meetings. Environmental Committee, Improvement Committee will meet on Monday here at Village Hall at 6:00 PM, and they have the curbside composting program that they're promoting. That's a volunteer program. You subscribe to that, and there is a cost to it, but it's an environmentally friendly thing to do, and we encourage everybody to participate in that. It's on the Village website. There's, you know, the notification has gone out with community communications on the electronic signs, and we hope that that turns into something. And then, the outcome of the next meeting will be bringing you some spring activities because we feel like we'll be able to actually do some of the programs that the EIC runs, you know, because they're at home, and those things can continue, obviously. So, we'll have more to follow next month, but, you know, I just want to say the optimism feels real good, so thank you.
Good, thank you. Trustee Barry III.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I apologize, I wasn't at the previous meeting, and I'd like to follow the sentiments of a lot of the other trustees and congratulating the captains and Chief Riley. I can't think of anyone who's more deserving to be rewarded, so that's great, and congratulations to him. Again, also, the Street Department continues to always impress. You hear it over and over again, when people get to Westmont, all of a sudden, the streets are clear. So, we continue to hear that. Quincy Street Station is back moving along, and they're making great progress. So, you know, again, a good partnership there with the Holiday Construction Group and moving forward. That project looks to be delayed even shorter than they originally anticipated. The medical facility on Ogden is getting closer all along, and we look for their grand opening to be very shortly. The Cass Avenue Dream Homes continues to finish up their project, and now we're seeing more activity across the street. We're seeing some tear downs, and I know staff is working on some retention issues, on some rebuilds along Cass there. So, again, we see the development kind of being contagious, as we have on 63rd Street, where we're all anticipating our mystery grocer, which I believe is getting, you know, dangerously close at this point. And that is all I have, Mr. Mayor, unless you had something to add from Economic EDC today. Thank you.
I do not, but thank you. And I'm going to turn to Trustee Brady.
I thank you, Mr. Mayor. Regarding annexations, community development continues to assist the Village Manager with various annexations throughout the village, and particularly on the southeast side of the village. Staff hopes to have several annexations, petitions on village agendas in the coming weeks and months. And also, I'd like to thank the, as you said, the Street Department's doing an excellent job clearing our streets during this winter time. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on, items to remove from the consent agenda. Does anyone have an item they'd like to see removed? Seeing none, and then I'd ask Manager May to please read the consent agenda. And that all those days.
First on the consent agenda this evening are executive session minutes, board to consider a motion to accept, approve, release the following executive session minutes with the exceptions as noted, and authorize the destruction of all accompanying verbatim recordings of said minutes, which are 18 months or more old. The, as noted in the exceptions are the, there's 27 dates listed that will be released in either in whole or in part. And next on the consent agenda are village board minutes. To consider the, a motion to approving the minutes of the village board meeting held January 14, 2021. That's followed by finance ordinance number 17, in the amount of $1,014,305.25. We have purchase orders. First purchase order is Westmont Auto Mile Group, $24,000. This is the annual contribution to the Westmont Auto Mile. Next purchase order is Municipal Emergency Services Incorporated, $307,549. This is for the AirPACs, the SEBA, purchase, of which we heard at the previous committee is offset by over $180,000 in FEMA grants received, also with the help of Congressman Caston. Those two purchase orders equate to $331,549. Brings the total of purchase orders together with finance ordinance number 17 to $1,345,854.25. Next is a reduction of Class II liquor licenses. Board to consider an ordinance reducing the number of Class II liquor licenses by one due to the sale of Vince Torri's Restaurant, 14 North Cass Avenue. Finally, on the consent agenda is a proclamation for National Activity Professional Week. Board to consider a proclamation designating January 24th through 30th, 2021, as National Activity Professional Week in the Village of Westmont, celebrating the professionals that brighten each day for the residents of our long-term care facilities.
Do you have a motion to approve as presented?
Motion to approve, Little. Second, Guzzo.
Motion made in second. On to question. I have a comment. The Auto Mile is basically a matching, from the village's standpoint, to match what the Auto Mile contributes, so they're contributing about $24,000 a year. We match that in order to provide the funding for basically 4th of July, some of the holidays activities, so that money goes right back in, into the community. Any other comments? Seeing none, then I'd ask for a roll call, please.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Brady.
Yes.
Trustee Barker.
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo.
Yes.
Trustee Barry.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Motion passes. We'll move on to new business. A, 428 South Cass Avenue, it's a fence variance. Board to consider ordinance to permit an increase in the height of the fence located in the side yard adjoining a street within the R4 general residence district. And I'd ask Director Sylvester if you want to come up and comment on it, and then we'll have, I think Manager May might have a public comment from it, so why don't you give a description and then we'll get your comment.
So, just very briefly, the request is for a six-foot-tall privacy fence, which normally has limits on where it can be located, and the applicants who live at 428 South Cass want permission to basically move the fence closer to the street. They're on a corner lot. So, if you want to look at your screens, or maybe up here, I can just try to give you a visual explanation briefly. Can people see? All right. So, what's on the screen now is what's requested. It's a six-foot-tall privacy fence, and really, what I just want to call everyone's attention to, towards the top of the paper is a red line that runs left to right. That's the property line. And they'd like this six-foot-tall privacy fence to go all the way out to the property line. Now, and they would need a variance to do that. Now, I just want people to understand, if the variance is denied, they still have options. And I just want to briefly go through what those are, so you're, you're clear about what their options are. What's on the screen now is where a six-foot-tall privacy fence could go, just by right. No special approvals or variance needed. It's pretty much the same as what they've requested, with the notable difference, if you look at that north property line again, there's a rule that says a fence like this has to be at least 15 feet setback from that lot line. So, that's one option that would be available.
And again, that's still solid, six-foot fence?
Yes, okay. There are other types of fences that are also allowed that aren't privacy six-foot tall, but just so you're aware, they could have a four-foot-tall open fence, so like the aluminum pole fences you see, or, you know, fake wrought iron, real wrought iron, if they still make that. That actually could go all the way out to the lot line along the street, but it would have to basically be see-through. Just skip that one, that one I drew in air. And then, another option, if they really want to maximize the amount of their area that's enclosed in a fence, they could also go all the way to that north property line, but they'd have to have a short fence, no more than 30 inches, and that could be solid. So, they could have a short fence out to that lot line, they could have a see-through fence out to that lot line, or they could have a privacy fence if it's 15 feet away from that lot line. And that's really all I wanted to make sure people were, were clear about.
And they have access on both Cass and 55th?
As you can see in the picture, they have a driveway with access onto both streets, yes.
Okay.
Did they give a reason why they wanted a six-foot solid fence?
They did say that they're just trying to maximize privacy in their backyard. Enclose as much of it with a privacy fence as they can.
Manager May, would you like to read the public comment before we look for a motion?
Yes, I have one of the public comments regarding this agenda item, and it reads, "Dear Mayor Gunther and Village Board members, I am a lifelong resident of the Westmont, having lived at my current residence at 9 West 55th Place," which I'll point out is the immediate neighbor to the West, "in Newfield Manor for the past 26 years. I also grew up as a youth on the same street for over 15 years. Newfield Manor has been a great place to live. As a lifelong resident of this neighborhood, I am writing to express my genuine concerns and objections to the proposed fence variance, six-foot solid tall fence extending past the level of the applicant's garage, and in keeping with the restrictions..." I'm sorry. "This property is adjacent to the, and directly east of my home and property. I'm concerned about the tall, solid fence extending past the level of the applicant's garage, and in keeping with the restrictions for fences that are placed on other residents of the neighborhood and village. The placement of the proposed tall, solid fence will result in a complete loss of view looking to the east. Instead of viewing the neighborhood and surrounding area, i.e. trees, grass, greenery, and Cass Avenue, I will now see a tall, solid fence whether I am looking out my front window or standing in my front yard. Moreover, the proposed variance will also impact the character of the neighborhood. I have already spoken with several neighbors, and they are in complete agreement with my concerns and objections. Although I have always tried to be a good neighbor, I must sincerely and respectfully express my concerns regarding the direct impact the proposed tall, solid fence will have on my home, the loss of view in front of my yard, and the effect on the character of the neighborhood. I have no objections to a solid, to a tall, solid fence in one's backyard that does not affect the neighboring front yards and in keeping with the spirit of the neighborhood. Moreover, keeping the tall, solid fence aligned even with that of the applicant's garage still provides for a usable, sizable fenced-in backyard that is comparable in size to other residences in the neighborhood. I did not intervene or submit public comment at the initial Planning and Zoning Commission meeting on January 13th since I did not completely understand the specifics of the project and comprehend the impact the proposed fence variance would have on my home and neighborhood. Thank you for your thoughtful consideration. Respectfully, Lawrence Powellcheck from 9 West 55th Place."
So, he was aware, got notified of the...
He was, I'm told, he was aware of the public here. He confirmed that he was aware, he received the notification, but did not participate at planning and zoning.
Before we have additional comments, can I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve, Nero.
Second, Little.
Motion made in second. To approve now, on comments and questions. Trustee Barker.
Mayor, if I could. I had spoken with the neighbor on a number of occasions, and, you know, as we go through this, and we spent, you know, some staff time looking into it, and then there's even additional developments even today, and I guess I really feel for the neighbor there and how it impacts his front yard, what he would, you know, what is allowed and what he would have to look at. Certainly, I am not in support of the variance, and I think that there's a, you know, an additional hardship there when you have a, the ability to extend out pasture, what do we call them, these buildings? So, it becomes a side yard fencing situation, and his, his particular concern is now it fences his front yard, which we can't fence a front yard with anything that isn't open. And it's a, it's a tough situation, but I feel for the neighbor, and I couldn't support this variance.
Thank you. Other comments? Trustee Brady.
I also made a visit, I went with two neighbors. One neighbor, he said, he doesn't object to a fence, but he thinks that fence that high would actually create a compound. He thinks the neighbor in the corner is running a business out of that, of that residence. And I visited there, and I noticed on the west end of the property, there's quite a bit of debris. It's hard to tell with a lot of snow, but there's a lot of debris that's been there for many months, old beds and whatever. Then you go to the far property line of the west side, there's also like heavy tree branches that were, were not from that tree, were some other tree that was dumped out. So, I suspect that, that the owner of the property, if he puts up a fence, it'll create a compound, and it's going to take away the face of the corner of 55th Place in Cass. And it's not a thorough street, as you know, it's a dead-end street. So, the only people on the street are the residents, and all those are nice, nice homes, all the one-story homes, and I think, and also, they had two large trees there at one time, now they're gone. So, it changed the face of the intersection. I don't know how long those trees were, how long ago, but I think it would be a detriment to put a six-foot fence on a corner of 55th Place in Cass. Because as a resident of Westmont, I wouldn't appreciate that. I think it's, it's not helping the homeowners. I know several letters were sent out to the residents in the area, and just two of them, they just said they didn't want to cause any problems, but they just object to the, how it's being changed, the atmosphere of that corner. And the resale value, I would say, would go downhill in that area with a large fence, with a, with a gate on there like that, and possibly that person could start using that area as a storage area. And also, oh, getting back to also with that debris, I think the, our property should be checked to pick, I don't know how long that material's been there, because you can't see it from Cass, but you can definitely see it from 55th Place. Thank you.
Thank you. Comments? Other comments?
The only concern I have is it's a side yard setback, and generally, we have a very, an ordinance in place for side yards, and that would be a concern I have, because it is in the side yard setback.
Do we have any other six-foot solid fences? Do we have any other six-foot solid fences in that neighborhood?
I'll try to chime in with some historical knowledge, to the extent I have it, over the past 20 years. Fence variances of this type have been granted in the past, including the recent pass. But they've almost all been along major arterial roads, 63rd Street, 55th Street, et cetera, where someone has, is on a corner lot and the side yard fronts one of those busier streets. And those have been granted. And the Community Development Department staff has been talking about actually changing the zoning ordinance to accommodate six-foot fences along the lot lines in those particular situations. On side streets, I can only remember one or two that have been granted. And one is about a block away from here, to the immediate south of Village Hall. There is a new construction house. One was granted there. The backyard acts onto an alley. So they're kind of surrounded by streets or public ways on three sides. There was justification for the fence, at least according to Planning and Zoning Commission and the board. There were no objections. And you take these on a case-by-case basis. There may have been one other similar variance granted on a side street years and years ago. I just can't recall that address.
The one on Lincoln is backyard to backyard. So it has less of an impact here. Then we're talking about one that is backyard to front yard in percentage of the fence.
Trustee Barry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm sorry, Linda. When I drive around town and I see things, the ones that are kept very well and the ones that are kept not so well are the ones that really stand out. And ones that have businesses run out of the homes are ones that always kind of really catch my eye as a guy who got involved over fire alarms being enforced and things like that on local business owners that participate with all the fees and so forth. And this is one that's been on my radar for a long time. This is, I'm not even sure it's the same people, but I think the people before them ran a business. And with Trustee Brady, this place has kept, you know, I mean, it's right on Cass and 55th. And it catches my eye every time I'm at the light that there's multiple vehicles. There's a lot of, like, as Trustee Brady commented, a lot of stuff and debris. So in some ways, it makes me for this fence because I've seen this for years and years and years. And to me, to cover it up, and even to what John Zemnic saying is, you know, it is a busier street. It doesn't get much busier than Cass and 55th there at that intersection. So it makes me to be more for it, to kind of cover up all the junk. I mean, it's unfortunate that they are allowed to do that right on Cass Avenue. But like I say, this isn't something new. This has been going on for many, many years. So it kind of makes me more for it than against it because I think it would clean up kind of an eyesore right there on Cass.
Manager May, you've got your hand up.
I do. I just want to qualify the comments and all the points taken from the last input. But to clarify, we're talking about 55th Place
Place.
in Cass Avenue, which is a short half-block south of 55th and Cass. The points are all the same. It's just being clear about the location.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, I visited the side also. Again, it seems like the turn lane, I think, almost goes to 55th Place at this point.
Yeah.
So it seems like you're at the intersection.
Yep. Good point. The?
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, Trustee Nero.
Thank you, sir. Just a few comments in addition to what is already said. I won't restate the obvious. I appreciate all the information. I think, you know, for me, and just the standpoint to the variance, I've set it in precedent. I mean, I can think of quite a few folks in a similar situation and off the side streets that, you know, unfortunately, on the side of their home or on the corner lots, do not have a fence around their patio or do not have the area fenced in for their children to play. And, you know, they kind of do that moving into the home. That's typical for that type of property. So I think, you know, we're going to open up a can of worms potentially with other residents, you know, seeing that this is a potential. But more importantly, to Harold's point, you know, I think this opens up a bigger picture of code enforcement that, you know, I know it's always been important to us in the past and there's been some staffing challenges. But maybe it's a good idea for us to remind staff or even potentially look at the budget to include some additional resources for code enforcement. So things like this, and what we see in the neighborhood is just maybe a little bit more proactively approached than reactively. And trust me, there's anybody here that understands that requires people to do that and dedicated people to do that, more importantly. So I just would, for maybe an idea we could pick up at our next committee meeting to discuss some more support for code enforcement. Homes like this need it. I mean, I wouldn't want to defy it. And I'm sure other folks wouldn't either.
And just to chime in on that, I did speak with the Building Commissioner yesterday and communicated the substance of that conversation with Trustee Barker yesterday. Code enforcement's aware of some complaints about this property. They're investigating it. And if there are violations, notices of violation will issue.
Thank you. And from my perspective, which they have pretty good options from my standpoint, even without the variance. So when you look at it, they still can put six-foot-high solid fence. Just can't go all the way to the corner with the variance. So I think there are options available for the homeowner. So just my two cents. And if, any other comments? Seeing none, then I'd ask for the roll on the motion to approve. Trustee Nero.
No.
Trustee Guzzo.
No.
Trustee Barry.
Yes.
Trustee Little.
No.
Trustee Brady.
No.
Trustee Barker.
No.
Okay, motion fails. The variance is not granted. We'll move on to new business B, which is an increase in available liquor license. Board to consider ordinance increasing the number of available Class II liquor license by one for the new ownership of Vince Torri's Restaurant at 14 North Cass Avenue. Got Deputy Liquor Commissioner Rollhorn.
Evening, Mayor and Village Board. The new owner of Vince Torri Restaurant at 14 North Cass has requested a Class II liquor license for the restaurant. Background check revealed that the Vince Torri Restaurant and its owner are eligible to receive a liquor license. If the available number of Class II licenses is increased, it will owe the honor of the Liquor Commissioner to issue a liquor license to Vince Torri Restaurant if he so chooses. And with me here tonight, he's here, is Rafael Cirillo. Rafael explained himself in a little bit more. But as of December 31st, Vince Torri changed ownership. Rafael is now going to be the new owner of Vince Torri's. He's keeping the name, location, everything. And he, we met about a week or so ago, I was. And at that time, as you can tell, he's hard at work because his pants got even more paint on it than they did last night. So he's been working, but he said he's done today. Today was his last day. So Rafael is going to bring to Westmont a authentic, upscale Italian restaurant. But one of the things that impressed me when we first met, he wants to have an upscale restaurant that's not going to cost you an arm and a leg. And I thought that was, you know, realism to it. So he is also, and he'll explain his qualifications a little more, he is a wine sommelier. In other words, a very wine expert. And he has certifications to prove that. The company he was certified with out of, is out of Denver and is one of the top five sommelier companies or certificate companies in the United States. He also has background experience in two restaurants in Aspen and Vail, Colorado, and also two restaurants in Indiana, where he's honed down his experience. And he's been here, came from Italy. So when he says authentic, I think he means authentic Italian meals. And for five years ago. And he looks forward to being here in Westmont. And with that, I will introduce Rafael Cirillo. Rafael, if you could tell us a little bit about yourself and what your plans are for the restaurant.
Thanks, sir. Ladies and gentlemen, good evening. Thank you for this opportunity. My name is Rafaelle. I'm 41 years old. And I was born in Southern Italy by Pompeii and Sorrento. The place where I grew up is called Castella Mare di Stabia. Such a long name. Is a little city on the Gulf, two miles from Pompeii and nine miles from Sorrento, which are more famous. I have been in the United States of America since 2014. And I still apologize for my English. Hope everything is clear.
You're doing good. Pretty good.
Yeah, you're doing well.
Thanks again. I'm very happy to become part of the Village of Westmont. I have to say thank you to Mr. Matt Scales. I don't know, who knows? Most of you may know him. I moved from Indiana nine months ago to start my business in Illinois. And my idea was to start in Downers Grove or Naperville. But the meeting with Matt Scales steered me towards Westmont. And I'm very happy. I'm very happy now. I want to say thanks to everybody for being so welcoming with me. And also, the choice of Westmont is very convenient for my business because there is no more strategic village right now. We are, my demographic target for the business is in Westmont. And Clarence O'Neil's, Bar Ridge, Hinsdale, Downers Grove, they are all around, all around my restaurant. And I conducted a study over the last two and a half years while I was managing another restaurant in Indiana. And my study revealed that the customer is able to drive 20 minutes or less in order to get the dining experience he or she wants. My restaurant is less than 20 minutes to, from all of these cities where the demographic target is. So Westmont is nice. I love it, and it's strategic. It's going to work. I have several years in fine dining management experience. One of the establishments I managed in Indiana is called Catello's. After my manager, they doubled the location. Now they have two. And this establishment was awarded the number-one Italian restaurant in the state of Indiana by the website MSN.com. It's quite a big thing. MSN is nationwide. And that happened under my management. And the certification, I will try to be more precise, but the introduction was very, very precise. I am a second-level wine sommelier, not first level. And my certification comes from International Wine Guild of Denver, rated top-five wine school in the United States of America by the Wall Street Journal. I am the, one of the very few in the entire DuPage County with such certification, and certainly the only Italian in the state of Illinois. My plan, I will try to make super short. My plan is to position the Vince Torri Restaurant between medium and upscale. No medium or no upscale, in the middle. So it will be possible to deliver the upscale Italian dining experience spending less than $50 per person. This worked in Indiana, made possible for my former boss to open a second location. It's a proven formula. And the formula has been proven to a demographic target again, which lives right here. So this is my idea. It's going to be 100% Italian. The former owner, Bob, was like 70% Italian, 30% American. I don't know how to do that because, again, I was born in Italy. So it's going to be 100% Italian. And the main characteristic will be everything made in the house. Noodles, dressing, sauces, dessert, which is what I've done before managing other establishments. This is the plan. And everything cooked at the moment. It's not going to be as fast as McDonald's, but it's going to be worth it.
And one other thing, I was trying to talk to Rafael. I said, I wanted him to tell you his expertise because when he told me, I was impressed, very, very impressed. He is not interested in video gaming at this time.
Not in the future, sir.
Not, or not in the future. And so I know that's always a concern when new businesses come to town. There are some issues with the, we've talked with the mayor and the fire chief with the fire system. He understands the mayor will not issue the license until those issues are taken care of. Rafael and Chief Friday and I spoke before this meeting. He's going to take care of them himself. He's not going to wait for the previous owner or the landlord or anybody to take care of it. He's going to take care of the issues. And he's invited the fire department in tomorrow so he can get everything done. His opening day probably was last week. He wants to get open now soon. But his target date was he would like to be opening and open business by Valentine's Day, before Valentine's Day.
Yes, Valentine's Day is the opportunity for me and any other establishment to go through the spring and survive the pandemic.
And so?
And I'm already in contact with the Chicago Metropolitan Fire Management. They are already taking me to the right direction to fix everything.
Right.
That content's been established already.
And I know we talked to the mayor earlier. I feel comfortable that Rafael will take care of this, as did the fire department. But he does understand that until those issues are taken care of, the mayor will not issue the license. So if anybody has any questions on that.
Yeah. If it's approved, which assuming it will be, I'm not going to sign it until everything's satisfied.
Correct. He understands that, and he's working, as I said, I think since we've talked, he's been working on the issues, so.
And you do know we're being spoiled. We love having our Italian restaurant, or 70% Italian restaurant downtown. So I'm glad to see that the Vince Torri's is going to continue. So we've been very, I know I have been. So, no, you see. So it's been a great experience downtown. So we're welcome. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve, Little.
Second, Barker.
Motion made in second. Manager May, is there a comment online for this agenda item?
No, sir.
Any other comments?
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd just like to say?
Mr. Mayor, I'd just like to say two things. Chicken Vesuvio. And in this environment, I mean, I eat out a lot. And it's in Westmont. But I'm missing my Vesuvio. But you need an online presence. And, you know, I need to see what's available. And I'll be there for you.
Do you want to hear a quick funny story, sir? From my parents' balcony, you can see the Vesuvio.
Oh.
They live less than six miles from the volcano. And the Vesuvio recipe is not Italian. But I will make that for you.
We need some to take its place, then. Welcome. And that, Trustee Barry?
Yes, thank you. Sorry, Bruce. Well, welcome to Westmont. And Larry Forsberg wanted me to recommend that you're 100% Westmont now. So moving forward, we will call you 100% Westmont, Rafael. And just curious, are you going to be able to retain any of the existing staff? And then, secondly, maybe to Tom or the mayor, as an existing restaurant that's been open there, what kind of fire issues or obstacles have they run into, being that the other business was open and running?
Chief is coming up.
I'll defer to the fire chief. Otherwise, I stick my foot in my mouth whenever I get that one.
Trustee Barry, as you know, the previous owner has failed to allow the fire department in in the last couple of years to do inspections. Was very belligerent to my staff along with ancil system, fire sprinkler system, exit lights, emergency lights, fire extinguishers, et cetera. So I have talked to Rafael tonight. I am off tomorrow, but I told him I'll meet with him at 9:30 tomorrow morning, along with my Fire Prevention Bureau staff. We'll go through the laundry list. And I have complete confidence that Rafael will meet my deadline so I can talk to Chief Ballhorn and to the mayor to approve this as given.
Any other comments?
Trustee Barry's other question. Are you going to be retaining other previous employees?
I want to answer about the previous employees. Paco, Arturo, Bernebe, Tomas already applied for the job, and they got it. already applied for the job, and they got it. Uh, the only one who didn't apply is the other server. I told everybody, you have a chance because you have been here before me. So five of them applied, and they got the job. They will be on board. Also, Tricia, Bob's, Bob Airdo's sister, applied for a job, and she will be, uh, you know, continuing the heritage of the family. She will be working in the dining room. Uh, beside that, my girlfriend, which is another reason why I moved from Indiana, she has 21-year experience in bartending, so will be in addition to the Vince Tori Bar Restaurant for a fine cocktail and fine champagne.
We all like-
I'm getting hungry already.
Very good. Thank you.
Yes. And, um, through the years, Vince Tori hosted Rotary for many, uh, years. So we've all gone accustomed to a lot of the individuals who have been employed there. So that's good to hear. Um, they know the community. They know, know a lot of us. So, any other comments?
Just welcome.
Thank you.
If not, then I'd, uh, call for a roll call, please.
Trustee Little?
Yes.
Trustee Brady?
Yes.
Trustee Barker?
Yes.
Trustee Nero?
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo?
Yes.
Trustee Barry?
Yes.
Motion passes. Now, I would imagine that you're Larry Forsberg. If you haven't met him, he's the go-to guy. Get him involved ribbon cutting. Get him to assist you. He's a great individual to have on board with your business. Thanks, everybody.
I think it's not Larry. Yes.
All right, good. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Have a good evening.
Good luck. New business.
There's, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
There's no way Larry missed him.
I know. I just had to say it, though. I knew that.
Was there a vote on that?
Yes. New business C, 700 Oakmont Lane, Ryan Companies U.S. Incorporated. Board to consider ordinance approving the following request from Kurt Passo, Pasco of Ryan Companies U.S. Inc., 700 Nor, 700 Oakmont Lane, Westmont, Illinois. One, a zoning code variance to allow for a shared parking aisle and driveway to straddle a lot line. Two, a zoning code variance request to allow parking in the east side yard setback of a new lot. Three, a zoning code variance request to allow parking in the west side yard setback of a newly created lot. Four, final plot of subdivision to create two lots with new addresses of 700 and 750 Oakmont Lane. And five, an amended final site and landscape plan to affirm an existing redevelopment. Director Sylvester.
So, Mr. Mayor and trustees, very briefly, I think you're all familiar with this site and how it used to be one very large building. I think we might all agree that the redevelopment of that site has gone very well. It's very attractive. It's, uh, both of the buildings are being occupied now. The approvals for that project to go forward were granted back in 2018, and I think that was a great decision that the village board made at that time. A lot of things needed to be tied up, some loose ends, some details, and the, the items in front of you denied are basically to just tie up those loose ends, make sure that all the entitlements are in place, that the final plat is done, uh, and then put that project to bed.
Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve, Guzzo.
Motion to approve, Nero.
Second, Guzzo.
Motion made, second to approve. Questions, manager May, is this, anybody online that wanted a question about this?
Nope.
Additional comments? Board, seeing none, roll call, please.
Trustee Nero?
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo?
Yes.
Trustee Barry?
Yes.
Trustee Little?
Yes.
Trustee Barker?
Yes.
Trustee Brady?
Yes.
Motion passes. New business D, North Lincoln Street Municipal Parking Lot. Board to consider ordinance to approve the following requests from the village of Westmont to enable the construction of a municipal parking lot on North Lincoln Street. One, a fa, final plat of consolidation for the three lots currently listed as 25, 29, and 33 North Lincoln Street, Westmont. Two, site and landscape plans for the consolidated lot. And three, special use permit for municipal parking lot in the R3 Single Family Detached Residential District. And I got director Sylvester still at the podium.
So similar to the last item, this is just some cleanup entitlement work, making sure everything is in place for the municipal parking lot that we've been discussing for at least a year or two and probably longer.
Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve, Little.
Second, Nero.
Motion made and second it to approve. Manager May?
This is the one with the public comment.
Okay.
All right. And actually, it's more of a question, and it's kind of written more in a, you know, an email-type question, but the comment is, "Tonight's agenda includes a request related to a planned municipal parking lot on Lincoln. My question is, how will the village be funding the purchase and construction of the parking lot, and what is the estimated cost of this project?" And that's from Mary Gabriel.
So it's a good question. You, you're going to answer it.
And it's a, um, it's a, so part of that question is, uh, you know, funding the purchase and the, and then construction. And there, the, the agenda item tonight are the variances that go with fitting the parking lot, uh, on the parking lot itself. The project has a public parking component, has a large stormwater management component, has a relationship to, uh, the parking lot on Cass and Burlington to mitigate those spaces over for an anticipation of development there. And the purchase of the property on these lots, the village owned all of the property already, although collected over time. And one of them for, you know, many, many years, the most recent purchase was maybe two years ago. So putting all the parts together, and how is it funded? It, it's pulling from the general fund, the TIF, uh, stormwater management program. So there's a, a, a lot of components that I don't have the capacity to get into the detail here, but if you add that all together, it's a $1.8 million project, including the, the engineering design aspects of it, uh, as well. So that's a very rough answer. I'll try and get her better details, um, when available.
But a sufficient amount of that could be the, the stormwater detention that's going to be provided for the area.
It is why, because it, the design, not only the capacity for stormwater management for the paved surface itself, but it is one of those underground vault systems that will occupy a majority of the, uh, parking lot, will have storage underneath.
That's going to benefit the entire area.
The region, the downtown, and, uh, when you're in the central business district, not to get off track here, but, uh, you know, we were talking about setbacks and fences, but in the central business district, the B1 zoning, there, there are no setbacks. So the, the parcels are often 100% covered, three sides, you know, with the building, and then maybe a small amount of parking in back. So the opportunities to provide stormwater management onsite are next to none. And then we try and, um, react to that capacity by putting in regional basins that people can, uh, participate with.
Good. Any other comments?
All right. I just want to make a comment. Um, this has been talked about since I was sitting on the Main Street Board late 90s. Um, so this has been a long time coming. So, yeah.
And, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I just agree with Marie that this has been, you know, long talked about. And, and to Steve's point on the stormwater, that area before we redid the alley, it used to hold water in a drought. Uh, you would see behind China Chef and all through there, it, it would be, you know, ankle deep. So, uh, the improvements keep coming. So I, I think it's a good project.
Thank you. And the, the alley was a huge improvement. Uh, any other? Seeing none, I'd ask for a roll call, please.
Trustee Little?
Yes.
Trustee Brady?
Yes.
Trustee Barker?
Yes.
Trustee Nero?
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo?
Yes.
Trustee Barry?
Yes.
Motion passes. Move on, new business E. I think it's E. Uh, committees of the board structure. Board to approve an ordinance amending Chapter 2, Section 2-33, Committees, and Chapter 2, Article 5, Division 5 of the municipal code to restructure the standing committees of the Board of Trustees. Manager May?
Mayor, the, these, there are several committees of the village board, uh, covered under this section. We described one of them that, you know, met before this meeting. Before every meeting, we have different committees that meet. Uh, up until this past year, the committees were, um, there was one public safety committee that handled both the business of the police and fire department. This restructuring here in the code is to separate the public safety committee into two separate committees, being the fire public safety and the police public safety, that will meet at their respective times. Other than that, there is no change.
Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve, Guzzo?
Second, Barker.
Second.
Got it. Continue?
Yes.
On to question. Seeing none, roll call, please. Oh, go ahead, trustee Barry.
Sorry. I was just wondering if that's because they can't get along? Is that why we're doing that? Is that?
They all had such, so our, our, our meetings, our committee meetings convene an hour and a half before the regular board meeting. So they're confined to, uh, you know, an hour, an hour and 15 minutes, uh, in total. And each public safety committee meeting, it was hard to get all the business in that they each, uh, you know, wanted to share. So you might have noticed that they were kind of rotating, uh, who had the majority of attention at which meeting, but then that just moves their quarterly meetings to semi-annual, and this is just a better way to address it all.
Any other comments? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Trustee Guzzo?
Yes.
Trustee Barker?
Yes.
Trustee Little?
Yes.
Trustee Barry?
Yes.
Trustee Nero?
Yes.
Trustee Brady?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. Moving on-
And they do get along well. I forgot to add that.
Miscellaneous. Anything we bring up, Chief Gunther, anything to nothing? Uh, anybody seeing none? I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, Guzzo.
Second, Little.
Motion made and second to adjourn the meeting. I'd ask for a roll call, please.
Trustee Guzzo?
Yes.
Trustee Barry?
Yes.
Trustee Nero?
Yes.
Trustee Barker?
Yes.
Trustee Little?
Yes.
Trustee Brady?
Yes.
And again, I thank everybody for, uh, participating, and there's no executive session, so this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
Frank, it's nice to see you.